That means we can get started. Okay, well, we have a quorum and our first presenter here. So we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Tonight's agenda is a work session agenda, so it's a little less formal than a regular meeting. We don't have public comment and all that, but we have four items on the agenda. We're going to start with a presentation from Garfield Clean Energy. Then we're going to have a presentation from Downtowner, then Planning Department of the Town, and then the Town's Park and Rec Department, and all these are really leaning toward the budget, which we're right in the middle of and will continue to develop. So with that, Morgan, if you'd like to join us, and I don't know if you have any colleagues here who are joining you as well, you can sit at the table there and dive right in. Thank you.
You need to press the buttons on your iPhone.
Yeah. It's okay.
During the Zoom meeting, correct? Need to press the buttons on your iPhone.
Yeah.
Should have been getting ready for this in advance.
It's okay.
Well, while I'm getting this going, we can introduce ourselves. I am Morgan Hill. I'm the Associate Director at CLEAR, Clean Energy Economy for the Region.
And I'm Dova Zili. I'm the Mobility Program Manager at CLEAR as well.
Thanks.
Right. And then it looks like I need approval. Hit send request to share my screen. Is that right? Yeah. Is it better to keep my camera on?
You don't need to, no.
It's kind of weird to stare at yourself all the time.
Yeah.
Switch screens to presenting. Okay. Looks like slideshow. Great. Okay, now that, yeah, now the mic is on so everyone else can hear. Again, my name's Morgan and I'm the Associate Director at CLEAR. And I know the Town of Carbondale Board of Trustees, a lot of you have, I think all of you have heard us talk about Garfield Clean Energy before and understand the relationship between GCE and CLEAR. But the reason you hear CLEAR with us as staff, that we're talking about Garfield Clean Energy, is that Garfield Clean Energy contracts with CLEAR to operate their programs and services. That's why you're hearing from us today. But we're excited to be here and talk to you about some of our progress and work that we've done so far this year and some of our cumulative results for Garfield Clean Energy and talk about some future plans. So Garfield Clean Energy consists of nine member governments. It's actually a government collaborative that's formalized through an intergovernmental agreement. And this has been in place since 2012, and actually GCE existed even before then as an advisory board in 2009. So these nine member governments include all the municipalities in Garfield County. The county itself, we also have Rafta and CMC, and then Holy Cross Energy and Garfield County Libraries are affiliate members. The Town of Carbondale has been a really important member and partner for Garfield Clean Energy really since the beginning. And we have really appreciated your ongoing collaboration and participation on the GCE Board. And I was, I've already said that CLEAR manages the programs for GCE through a contract.
We're having some roofwork done. Okay.
I was like, what is going on?
I don't, I don't think we considered that work going on past five during a trustee meeting, so.
It'll be okay. We need to get it done. It's, it's, we'll just roll it then.
Yeah. All right, so GCE, Garfield Clean Energy, really has four focus areas, and it's kind of three focus areas under an umbrella of economic development. So one of our biggest areas that we work in is energy efficiency. And this is really for residential, commercial, and public buildings. Commercial, public buildings can fall under commercial buildings as well. But energy efficiency, and I would say electrification, kind of falls in that realm as well. We also focus on locally produced renewable energy. And obviously adding any renewable energy to the grid is great, but a lot of the work that we have done over the years is to really spur solar development. A lot of what we're working on right now is focusing on geothermal and expanding markets for that as well as the potential for thermal energy networks in our area. We also do work in transportation or clean mobility. And again, all of this is really under the blanket of economic development and diversification. And so really benefiting the residents and businesses as well as the member governments of and being able to support them, lower their energy bills. I'm trying to go to the next slide. There we go. Okay. So I just have this, obviously, there's lots of beautiful pictures of the Town of Carbondale and Mount Sobris, but as we start to talk about buildings, I like to show images that highlight both residential and commercial buildings throughout town to show that we work in both of those areas, trying to help reduce energy bills. So we provide free energy coaching for Garfield County residents and businesses, like I said. And energy coaching, sometimes there's a question of like, what's the difference between an energy audit or an assessment and energy coaching? Because we are often promoting, and right now we're offering free energy assessments for income-qualified residents. But energy coaching really helps folks, once they've gone through that process, we help them understand what that assessment means and know what next steps they need to take. And it's not, actually, they don't always have to have an assessment. We have folks reach out to us that are interested in putting a heat pump in their home, and we provide them with resources for contractor lists and is it even possible to do that kind of measure in their home as well as financial resources for them. A lot of the coaching that we provide is biggest bang for your buck energy savings measures. And it's not as glamorous, but it's a lot of attic and basement insulation and pipe wrapping that can help energy efficient. Again, we provide coaching on available rebates and other financing. We can recommend different appliances, and especially for a specific building, as well as contractor lists and certified contractors. And I like to include the top picture to you all, because this was a home in Carbondale where the homeowner actually wasn't income qualified, so they didn't go through our reenergize program that I'll talk about. But we still helped them get set up with a heat pump in their home and provided a lot of recommendations to get them on the right track for that project. And then the bottom picture is an event that we hosted, actually, it was last year, for the lodging and hospitality industry on how to make hotels more energy efficient. So we worked with the hotels in Carbondale to get them there and make sure that they knew what resources were available to make their, again, make their building more efficient. Reenergize Garfield County, as we're talking about residential energy efficiency, is one of our flagship programs for GCE. It's been in place since 2022. And it is an income-qualified, one-stop-shop for residential energy efficiency. So what's great about this is that a resident or a family can apply for reenergize, and then we get them from the application to $4,000 worth of energy efficiency measures for their home. So it's not a rebate program where the homeowner has to front the cost and then they get a rebate. So a lot of what that does is help people actually get through the process who may not have participated. This program is saving participants up to $100 a month, or sometimes even more, on their energy bills, which can really make a difference for residents and families in our area. I was talking about measures like insulation and air sealing. We also will rebate HVAC upgrades. And for Carbondale residents, we have allocated $49,600 to this program since 2022. So you can see that a lot of the resources that Carbondale is putting into GCE really goes directly back to your residents through this program. Our Advanced Energy Management Program is also with, we're directly saving the Town of Carbondale money. So our AEM program tracks your utility bills as well as 15-minute interval data with the goal of reducing energy use. So the interval data and utility bills are tracked for several buildings for the Town of Carbondale, including Town Hall, the Rec Center, and the water and wastewater treatment facilities. And interval data is great. I'll show you a graph in the next slide about what that looks like when we're tracking the IDR data. But the utility bills took me a little bit to understand why this is so important. It can be helpful in a process where we rate the building against Energy Star standards or through Energy Star standards to understand if it's using, based on the size, using more or less energy than it should be. And it's really, it's, I don't want to say it's easy to track utility bills, but it's information that's readily available for us to be able to measure energy use in town facilities. Carbondale's data shows a downward trend in energy use, which is a good thing, from 2024 to 2025. And the wastewater treatment plant, this is a great example of how this program can measure progress and successes. And the fact that the wastewater treatment plant showed the significant reduction in energy use because of equipment upgrades that were made last year. One area that we're working on, a project we're working on that's related to both renewable energy and our AEM program, is a solar production report that we'll be sharing the results of at our November meeting. So tracking all the results and functionality of Town of Carbondale facility, or Town of Carbondale Solar Arrays as well as other members. Something else that we're noticing as this program has been in place, in one form or another, it used to be the Energy Navigator, and we made a switch over to a new platform, is that these, the interval data tracking meters need to be replaced. And they have a lifespan. So replacement will be needed for the public works meter moving forward. And you also may want to consider adding the pool for energy tracking when that's complete as well. This is a graph of the Advanced Energy Management data when we see the interval data. This is what a graph should look like, where energy use maybe goes up during the day when the building is set to occupied standards. And the HVAC kicks on, and there's more lights on, and then the energy use curve goes down at night. And we might be able to see that if there was a spike at night, and the system might not be functioning the way that it should be, then we can work with the facility manager to tweak that and make sure that you're not spending money to heat and cool a building when it's unoccupied. And Dova's going to talk about clean transportation.
Hello. So like I said at the start, I'm the Clean Mobility Program Manager for CLEAR, and we really work in two main topic areas, the first being electric vehicles. So we had the opportunity to help the Town of Carbondale write two EV charging grants this year. We wrote, we helped write one for five Level Two fleet chargers for the Police Department and five public Level Two chargers, which are going to go right back there. And as you probably know, you were awarded both of them. So that is very exciting and excited to have more public and fleet charging nearby. Another part of electric vehicles that we work on is the countywide EV readiness and implementation plan. And a few of the aspects of this plan that we're focused on this year are identifying where additional charging infrastructure is needed throughout the county and the region, and then also developing various EV educational resources and one-pagers. Some examples are, you know, what types of questions do you want to ask the dealer when you're going to buy an EV? And what are the different EV rebates and incentives that are available? We also hosted two events in Carbondale in early September. We hosted an EV 101 workshop and the EV ride and drive. The EV workshop was at the Third Street Center, and we convened, I think, five different EV experts. They had different topic areas, so one was charging, another was rebates. And the public got to come and ask questions to those topic experts about, about questions they had. And so if they had a question about home charging, there was an expert there to talk about that. And then at the EV ride and drive, we had a Nissan Aria, a Chevy Blazer, a Chevy Equinox. And the highlight was definitely the ID Buzz, which is Volkswagen's electric take on the Volkswagen bus. So we had over, around 200 people participate in that and 40 or 50 ride and drives. And that also took place in the parking lot right behind us. So those were three of the main things we did this year for EVs. And then the other main topic area in clean transportation is multimodal transportation. So the first thing being, we ran two years of an e-bike grant program where we gave 90 e-bikes away to income-qualified Garfield County residents. So 40 the first year and then 50 the second year. And this, this is one of our, like, not best programs, but we get a lot of good feedback about this program. Some examples of folks who got e-bikes are, there was a legally blind man who cannot drive, but he got an e-bike and now he can get around and is much more mobile. We have a Carbondale resident who got an e-bike. He works at Dos Greenos, used to work at the library, and now works for the Rec Center and replaces and gets around on his e-bike instead of his car. So that's pretty cool, too. And then we also were able to offer $200 accessory vouchers. And we had some parents, you know, say in their feedback that they would like to ride more, but they couldn't because they had to bring their kids everywhere. And those parents were able to get trailers and kid seats. So that was very cool as well. The state is unfortunately no longer offering that e-bike grant program, but they are offering a new e-bike grant program that's for fleet e-bikes. So like, the Police Department has a few fleet e-bikes. This program could be another opportunity to expand how many they have. We also hosted Bike There, Garfield County, on Colorado's Bike to Work Day in June. And we're just doing our best to acknowledge that not everyone can bike to work. So we hosted it at every library throughout the county, so we held six simultaneous events in 2024 and 2025, and they drew over 300 participants each year. But just knowing not everyone can bike to work, but you can bike somewhere around town, like the library. And then lastly, we're working on developing a transportation management organization with the intention of promoting alternative transportation, like walking, biking, riding the bus, to reduce single occupancy cars. And in August, we ran a pilot program that had over 600 participants who tracked 5,000 trips and over 48,000 alternative miles. So stay tuned for more campaigns this year.
So like I was saying, a lot of what we do is under this umbrella of economic development. And, you know, one, one really straightforward way that we end up benefiting the economy is when folks don't have to spend as much money on their energy bills. They're able to put more money into the local economy. But we also do some direct work in economic development and the clean energy workforce. So this year, we hosted a ducted heat pump training. It was really geared towards HVAC professionals to learn how to install heat pumps in existing homes. We also, like I mentioned, we maintain contractor lists. And actually, we'll have folks reach out to us who are interested maybe in professional certifications or training opportunities. We've provided training in blower door testing, which is a new requirement for some energy codes. So we're expanding the network of professionals that can do this work. But then a lot of, you know, when we talk about clean energy workforce, an electrician who maybe isn't necessarily just clean energy, but they're installing heat pumps or EV charging, we're supporting that workforce to have the skills and tools they need to do that as well. This year, we also helped to host the Colorado Building Symposium West in Glenwood Springs. And that was such a successful event over on the Front Range that our team was helping to have it be right here in the Roaring Fork Valley. And we had some great feedback that it was well-attended and that folks got a lot, a lot out of that. Shifting gears a little bit, which actually I could take questions on kind of GCE broadly and that programming, and then also wanted to bring the Impact Accelerator Grant to your attention again. I know that you all have discussed this previously, but as we're continuing to work on this grant and are so appreciative that the Town of Carbondale is willing to be the lead applicant for the Garfield Clean Energy cohort. So can talk a little bit more about what this grant is like and some, some of our ideas around it. We are looking to submit a letter of, a template letter for you all to sign for a letter of support, either for your October 20th meeting or the following one. So knowing that both of those deadlines are coming up pretty soon, and we're hard at work to develop. You have to have both a policy and a project. We're very interested in the project funding as well as the policy funding, but the project funding can really help spur a number of different initiatives forward. And so the policy, there's a number of different policies to choose from. And so we've been working with Jess, who is our GCE Board rep, to make sure that that's kind of all set up and will support the Town of Carbondale in addition to the broader Garfield County community. So I can, again, talk a little bit more about that, but it could be up to $5 million in funding is the max for the Vision budget. The standard budget is about $2 million per entity, and then there's, there could be a constrained budget. So they, the state has indicated, you know, depending on how many applications they receive, they might give smaller amounts of funding to more entities, or they might look at our application and see that it's really competitive and will really help our region and meet the state's goals and choose to fund more of it. So we certainly have a lot of work to do, up to $5 million. So that is bulk of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you both. Yeah, we'll pause for questions, and I appreciate that you included the membership contribution request as a separate memo. It looks like you're looking for a 5% increase, which seems quite reasonable. Yeah, so with that, any questions or feedback on any of these initiatives? And just keeping in mind, this is different from our contract with CLEAR where we say, we want to do all these things. This is the GCE Board directing their staff through CLEAR on what the countywide priorities are. And this is what they've been working on. Any questions? Thoughts? Yeah, Colin.
Thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to highlight the work around the advanced energy management. So Third Streets, we've been a guinea pig since GCE has been working on this. It's been really useful. It's also, I think, as we move forward on capital planning, this is going to be really useful because we're going to see how our systems are working. And some of our systems in all of our buildings, not just Third Street, are getting older. Morgan referenced solar production. Many of our solar panel arrays are 15 years plus, and some of them are starting to not be as productive as they could be. And this is a really helpful way to help us track some of that. So as we move forward, for our own capital planning, I think working with GCE will be really useful in terms of understanding what the opportunities and challenges might be moving forward.
Great. Thanks, Colin. Yep.
Well, thank you for this thorough presentation. Nice job. I'll just chime in on the AEM. Do you think it'd be good for us to add the monitoring to the new pool? In past work, being able to track the energy live and the build data, especially with solar, it's been really helpful for different, especially government buildings, but any entity to make sure everything's connected and running like it should be. I remember when we first got the data set up at the high school with the new solar array, Excel had it on the wrong rate. And it ended up, the school district received like an $11,000 refund because we were able to catch it. So it'd be really good to hold Excel accountable, make sure that we're on the right rate for that building. And then also, I think, since we're showcasing it as a all-electric pool, we'll definitely want to be able to have really easy access to the data. And it would be kind of an awesome case study for GCE or CLEAR to feature.
Absolutely. We are always looking for more of those, if you ever hear of anything in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Ben is with Roaring Fork School District, which is a separate contract that CLEAR has to track energy use, but just highlighting that RFSD is on track to save 200.
Yeah, we've saved at least $300,000 over the last two years and have had some solar issues that continue to be a struggle, but that this is key to helping us solve.
So it's just a major success story for the AEM program as well.
Yep. And it's one of the reasons that we have, just as to tie it to some of our other work in our path to Net Zero. Net Zero. I was like, what do we call it? You know, we have a goal of getting more commercial properties tracking their energy, and it's less about like big brother monitoring as just like, here's what happens when you have access to the data. And you could actually, you know, reduce your costs if you have a large building in our town and it's your business, and it might not be something you're aware of. But if you're trying to hire more people or pay them more, maybe you need more people, you might be able to save some energy. So I think, because we've learned so much since tracking energy on so many public buildings, we could certainly help commercial businesses find that kind of savings as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, it's a monetary savings for them, but also from a reducing energy use standpoint, one major commercial project can reduce a lot of, you know, you can save a lot of energy versus residential. And we do focus a lot on residential because of how much it can help families when they reduce their energy bills. But we also, that's why we maintain having that goal of supporting commercial buildings as well.
Great. Anything else? Any concerns about the funding request? Staff needs to know if that's a go-ahead in the budget. I think it is. Okay.
I think it's good.
Great. Awesome. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Downtowner 2026 Service Proposal and kind of a overview of the service that we've been that we've had for the past, I guess, year, year and a half.
Yeah, so we have Travis Gleason with Downtowner Online, and then we've got Stephen and Mike here.
Great. Hi.
You know, I don't really have too much planned other than what you saw in the memo and more just happy to be a part of this conversation to see where you guys want the 2026 Downtowner service to go. Colin, you did ask for some stats, so we got some information. I told Travis to print this out, so if you guys want to take a copy, pass it around. That would be lovely.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd love to just hear from the Downtowner team, any, any highlights that you all see in this. And we see that you've recommended some additional service during afternoon peak hours. It looks like at a cost of about almost 100,000 or 80, 80-some thousand dollars additional staff. It sounds like recommends sticking with the current, current plan for next year, based partly on our reimbursement agreement with Rafta, our cost-sharing agreement rather. And I discussed that with our town manager. And I discussed that with our town manager, Ryan, this morning. And I kind of agree with the staff recommendation. I mean, I'd love to just have a good discussion as we get into this. But what I'd really love to see us do in 2026 is start at the beginning of the year, engaging with Rafta in a first and last mile planning conversation that includes the circulator and includes the Downtowner and includes all the money that we're both spending on both of those. And how can we optimize that? Because this is still, I just think we have to remember it, it's still a relatively new service and we still have, you know, fairly limited data. So I just want to be careful about expanding it until we, we really know we can stick with that and then it's the best way to meet all those needs. But with the Downtowner team, is there anything that you all wanted to highlight or present or anything? Before we kind of dive into those discussions, I think that's the meat of the discussion to me.
Trav, I think the
And just make sure you're green on there. Red is bad, green is good. There you go.
I'm live.
Well, it's the opposite of ours. Ours, ours red is good. So.
Yeah. So I'm Stephen. I'm a co-founder of Downtowner. So it's our pleasure to work with you all.
Great. Thanks for being here.
Joined by Mike.
Mike Fisher, Colorado Regional Manager.
Yeah. Mike also happens to live in Carbondale, so passion project for him to sit at least. I'm joined by Travis. Travis is another co-founder here, Downtowner, and he's, he's the data guy. But I, I think, you know, we just want to present to you guys, you know, instead of just saying, hey, you know, we're, we, we would, we see a fit for some more service instead of just kind of like anecdotal. We did pull some data. We had operated a third van two separate days in September. So Travis pulled some of that data and made some associations that just might be interesting for you all as we think about the future and, you know, future service needs. So we understand totally the staff recommendation. Are not recommending anything in particular, but the data is interesting. And I think we wanted to kind of give you the rundown of that. So without further ado, I'll let Travis have the floor here.
Awesome. Hey, everyone. Travis Gleason, another one of the co-founders of Downtowner. And yeah, you know, Jared sent me the, the questions that you all had. And I just put together a quick sheet with the answers to those questions and also included the, just a quick look at the, the data surrounding our recommendation for having the third vehicle online during the afternoon and early evening kind of peak hours that we see. So if you want to look down at the bottom of that sheet that was passed around, we could start there and then, and then circle back to some of the other questions that you all had. But as Steve mentioned, just starting on, I think it's row forty two there, there's the third driver recommendation. So this is just where we see the, the most need for that third driver. And what we did was we polled the weekday hourly demand and also the weekday average wait time by hour, just so you could kind of get an idea of where those surge times are, where the, the highest wait times are. Obviously it varies throughout the day. And of course, the highest wait times definitely coincide with the busiest hours of the day. Right now, we operate two, two vehicles online during all hours of the day. That's what our budget allows for. So we have the vehicles online throughout the day and we're definitely seeing the, those afternoons. You can see the, the, the peak hours being three to five and the, the hour or two before and after that also sees those higher wait times. Partly people getting off of work at that time, partly due to the, the schools letting out, which of course there is ridership that, that comes from maybe people who don't have a car, aren't of driving age yet, or just don't have their own car. So I think we, we definitely realize that, that there's some, there's some high school, middle school type, type ridership going on, even though we don't really service the schools directly. You know, kids are, kids are smart. They find a way. So as Steve mentioned, we did operate as just as a test, a third vehicle for the, that same timeframe as we're suggesting, basically eleven to seven is what we tested just to see kind of what would happen, just so that we could provide you with some actual data. And we did find that, as we suspected, there's quite a bit of, of extra demand that we could be moving around if we did have that vehicle on the road. So the first day that we tested was Monday, September fifteenth. And we just put that third vehicle on the road for those, those hours specified there. And we got about a twenty four percent increase in ridership compared to other Mondays in the month of September, just as a direct comparison. And the average wait time across the entire day basically did decrease by also, you know, almost twenty four percent, twenty three point six. Pretty similar situation on Thursday of that week, we put, put the third vehicle online just to see what would happen. And we had a, a nice bump in ridership of sixteen and a half percent, as well as the wait times decreasing on average throughout the day by, by twenty six point one percent. So I think, you know, it's a small sample size, but to us, it's, it, it's pretty clear that the, the van would be well utilized. Obviously now it's just a matter of, is there funding for it? And, and we totally understand that sometimes there, there just isn't the ability to, to fund that extra service. And, and so we understand that, but wanted to show this to you and, and see if you had any questions before we look at some of the other data points.
Questions on that? Okay. Sounds like you made it pretty clear. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. So we could kind of scroll back up here to some of the other questions that were asked. And what we did was we just polled the, the data for the year so far, so January first through yesterday. And the total passengers and rides are listed there for reference and, and we'll use those totals to look at some percentages here. But the, the question was asked, the, the top pickups and drop offs. We want to know what are the actual numbers of passengers and rides that are going to and from those top locations? And the, the top pickups actually happen to be the same as the top drop offs, which sometimes can be different depending on the, the service area and, and just the, the, the demand patterns. But in this case, they are actually the same. So we just broke it down by top pickup locations first and then top drop off locations. So you can see the total number of passengers and then the percent of the total of the year. So for instance, Carbondale Park and Ride, the, the rides, for instance, nine thousand eight hundred and eighty eight pickups at the Carbondale Park and Ride equates to eighteen percent of the total fifty five thousand and ninety five rides so far this year. And then you can look and, and see the same thing with the drop offs. And, you know, we broke it down, passengers and rides, just so you can see the difference because the, you know, the percentages are, are a little bit different. So any questions on that one before we move on? I mean, you know, fairly straightforward, the, the Garfield Ave did kind of raise another question of, oh, wow. You know, that, that apartment building, where are they going? So that was, that was the next thing. But before I get into that, any questions on, on just those, those initial stats there?
Anybody? No? Clear. Thank you.
Cool. So nine hundred Garfield Ave ridership, where, where's the other end of the trip, right? There's pickups there, there's drop offs there. It is three percent of our, of our ridership total. There are other things that are one percent, two percent, you know, we can kind of go on and on and, and really break it all down. But they are the, the next highest single used location. So we wanted to see, hey, where are the other end of their, what's the other end of their trip? And so again, we basically just took the top three. Once you get beyond the top three, it was all fractional percents and, you know, one percent type, type numbers. So what we did here is just look at the total rides from nine hundred Garfield Ave. And then we're looking at, this is the combined pickups and drop offs. So it's just, where's the other end of the trip? You know, whether the, the pickup or the drop offs at Garfield, there's, there's another end. Where is that? And so we found that one thousand one hundred fifty five trips, the other end of the ride was the park and ride. And that's thirty six percent of all nine hundred Garfield Ave rides. And then you can kind of see the rest of them. So these three locations make up about fifty five percent of everywhere that Garfield rides are, you know, going to and from. And then the other ones are just all very one offs. So a lot of, you know, a couple of rides here, a couple of rides there. So, you know, the, the, the bulk of it is to the grocery store and to connect with the park and ride. And, and then from there, there's a lot of, you know, I'm guessing maybe, maybe someone works at, at this diner, right? Maybe a couple of people work there. So we, we've kind, we can kind of take guesses at, at maybe why, or maybe just everyone there really loves this diner. I'm not sure, but probably somebody works there and they're, and they're going there on a daily basis. That, that's my guess, but.
Travis, do you mind if I chime in?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Mike. Who the rider is.
That Honey Butter pickup and drop off location, that's commonly used for the mobile home park behind it. It's kind of a, just like a centralized pickup point we have for there. So we, we are not single-handedly support F of Honey Butter. We're, we're just kind of helping out the community back there.
Great.
Okay. Yeah. That's, that's a good point. Sometimes there are locations kind of on the perimeter of our service area that start getting used a lot. And it's like, oh, that's, that's odd. But it's because maybe it's the closest place, you know, that people can walk into the, the service area and then get a ride from there. So thanks, thanks for that, Mike. Any questions on nine hundred Garfield Ave before we go on?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Senior living ridership, same kind of question, but I think it was phrased, you know, are they going to the park and ride? Are they going to other places? So again, we're kind of just doing the same thing here, taking the two biggest locations. They didn't really have a good third one to show. Everything beyond Carbondale Park and Ride at seven percent was all single digits. So I just didn't think it was worth kind of going on from there. But grocery store and park and ride happened to be up there. They have a lot of other locations though, that are just very one off versus the, the nine hundred Garfield Ave. So slight, slight difference there, but not as many connections to the park and ride, which I think maybe was kind of the prompt of the question, are they really going to the park and ride from the senior living locations? And, and I guess the answer is not usually, but sometimes seven percent of the time.
Okay. Thanks.
I mean, I think, I think the question was just asked, what, what is the, the mode? Which is, you know, the most frequent wait time that pops up. I did, you know, give you those, those stats here. I thought I'd just include the, the mean and the medium as well. And then because it's, you know, everyone gets wait times like in our system, kind of like down to the second technically, even though we only show, we round to the nearest minute. But, so it was kind of hard to, to really make sense of just the mode, you know, what does that mean? So I just wanted to show more buckets of wait times. And so just looking at just some general buckets here, fifty five percent of the rides have a wait time from zero to ten minutes, thirty percent have a wait time from ten to twenty minutes and, and so on. So you can kind of just see more, more bucket kind of version of that, that stat. So. Any, any questions there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Easy crowd. Unique riders, just how many unique people requested these fifty five thousand rides? So that's, you know, almost twenty three hundred unique rider accounts requested these fifty five thousand rides that we've had so far this year. So that was a, a question as well. How many rider accounts are there? Average occupancy, just over two passengers are typically in the vehicle. And because more often than not, the request is for a one passenger ride. You know, we, we group as, as many rides as makes sense, right? If people are heading the same direction at the same time, our, our system is going to automatically group those. So we, we see here that it's just over two passengers per ride. Two passengers are in the vehicle at the same time typically. That's our average occupancy. So you know, a lot of the time we're grouping more than two parties of one. But then you do have those times of the day where there's just, you know, one person needing to go somewhere and there just isn't anyone else to group right with them. So that, that obviously brings down the average quite a bit, even though we do have, you know, sometimes a full vehicle, right? Times of the day where people are commuting to and from, you know, say the park and ride, you know, during those, those busy morning and, and evening hours. You know, yeah, you're going to see some fuller vehicles, you know, three, four, five passengers, sometimes more. But then during the middle of the day, you might see a lot of, you know, singles or something like that riding around. So. Circulator stop on Main Street, we really don't have any ridership going to or from the circulator stop. We, we, we pulled that and there just, you know, wasn't any direct drop offs happening there, which isn't really a surprise because I, I think people would probably just go to kind of where they needed to go all the way with us. So, you know, we don't see a ton of that. I know the other use case could be, well, you know, what if someone comes in on, on the B R T jumps off at the park and ride, jumps onto the, the circulator and then wants to go somewhere else from there or something like that. But we just don't see much of that. It's usually just people, you know, going all the way directly to the park and ride if that's where they want to go. Or if they're trying to go to somewhere else the circulator goes to, they probably just take the Downtowner vehicle all the way there. So. So that was, that was that one. And I think those were really all the questions that, that we had. There was another one on, on demographics and a few other things that we don't currently ask riders for at the moment. Doesn't mean we can in the future, but just not data that we collect right now. So happy to open it up for questions and.
Great. Thanks so much Travis for addressing all those questions. I think Colin had forwarded those questions along and I think those were really illuminating. So maybe let's focus our questions right now for the Downtowner team on the service and the data and all that. And then we can get back to staff and, and talk through what we want to do for next year and, and talk about the whole picture. But any questions about the data and the service itself? Yeah, Chris? And just make sure on there for these guys.
So I'm seeing up here sixteen, eight or eighteen percent of the total pickups and roughly seventeen to twenty percent for the park and ride is that? And this is covered under this first and last mile. Is that roughly the percentage we would get from Rafta? Then?
So you, oh, sorry. I didn't know if you were asking me.
But if this is, was to continue in twenty twenty seven, theoretically, we would be getting roughly twenty percent of the cost of this.
I think you would actually add those two numbers together. Because any ride that starts
It's pickups plus drop offs.
Okay. I don't know if I, know if I grouped that.
Well, that's what we argued for.
Yeah. Anytime somebody gets
Isn't that double counting though, if you have a?
No, it's like somebody gets off B R T and gets on, that counts. And then somebody else gets, you know, this service to the B R T to board the bus, that counts as well.
Okay. So we're like forty percent roughly maybe.
Yeah, it looks like it. I'm looking at eighteen percent on pickups and twenty percent on drop offs. So we'd be at thirty eight. Right?
I think the latest month, September was forty one percent total.
Okay. So somewhere around that forty. And I think we're, we're hoping for fifty because that's what we're used to as far as the match. Yeah.
That's one of the questions Travis. So I don't think, we don't have to worry about it for twenty twenty six, but is there a way to prioritize that, that spot so we get closer to the fifty? And again, it's just trying to deal with the, the challenges of funding this. So that's a, that's an ongoing question. It doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I think it's an, an ongoing question that we might have going forward.
Is the thought like
Yeah.
Is the thought that like the algorithm would prioritize getting folks to and from Rafta over other things? Is that, is that a possibility?
Yeah. Like, so if you pick someone up there going to the park and ride and then you get something on, you know, you know, East Main, you don't go. Pick them up. You go right to their park and ride and then you go get them, something like that.
Is that Travis, can you just weigh in? Is that kind of thing possible? Again, we don't expect that to be an immediate change, but if we wanted to do that in the long run?
Yeah, I think likely what we would do is, is more on the resource allocation side. So the vehicles, we might say that, you know, one of the vehicles can do any trip, right? In the whole service area and maybe the other vehicle is more restricted to the park and ride, maybe city market, a few other places that are really nearby. So that, that vehicle is really just kind of running either to or from that general park and ride area. And that would naturally give those types of rides better wait times. And that might encourage more ridership and get you guys closer to the fifty percent. So I think, I think any kind of I think any kind of priority type thing that, that we might come up with. Um, I guess what we're really saying is we hope that lower wait times for those types of rides, uh, will encourage more ridership, you know, to those places, right? To, to the park and ride. So, um, yeah, we can certainly play with some things like that. And, um, we've done that in some other places where we've, um, done some various priority, um, strategies for connecting to, um, either bus or rail. So, um, that's something we can, we can certainly talk about.
Great. Another question is Ross.
Is, is there any precedent for, um, retailers like City Markets sort of contributing to, to your service anywhere else? Um, I mean, I, I feel like if we're helping deliver this many people who might not otherwise go there, or there may, there may be some way to partner, I guess. I think, I think there's a, there's a, there'd be a logical argument there that, that maybe we're making, we're making that a real easy trip to.
Community partnerships can be, you know, something that you guys can definitely, definitely leverage. Um, and some of the other communities we work, we work in that have, you know, very large employers, um, you know, where we're taking a lot of employees to work.
In this case shoppers.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely easier to engage with on, on that kind of, you know, contribution type level to the service. So. Could be a good conversation to have.
We're currently doing it with, uh, Valley View in Basalt.
Interesting. Okay. Other questions or thoughts on the kind of data and service? Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, so it looks like the, um, wait time over twenty minutes comes to about fourteen percent. And is that about where you see people like cancel a ride or use the app, you, you know, I guess what's the cutoff for where maybe people don't want to wait that long for a ride? So then they might find a different way or jump in their car when they thought they'd take the Downtowner?
Um, it's a tough question to answer because every community is a little different depending on what their expectations are set at. Um, so, you know, we have operations in places where, uh, we're replacing a, a fixed route that had frequency of sixty minutes, right? And so they used to wait an hour sometimes for a ride and now thirty minutes sounds great. And they're, you know, they're not phased at all. Um, other communities had a fifteen minute wait time, um, they're used to for, or whatever bus that maybe we're replacing or, or we're, you know, a, an extra service for it. And that's what they're used to. So that, that might be more what they're looking for. Um, I'd say in general, um, we really like to, to see that average wait time, um, stick below twenty minutes. Um, ideally, I think in, in a service area this size. So as we get closer to that thirty minutes, I think you could expect for some people to maybe find another way. Um, or maybe they just plan more ahead of time, you know, next time they, they know that, hey, at four or five o'clock, it's really busy. I'm going to plan ahead and I know it's going to be like twenty or thirty minutes. So I'm just going to plan that into when I request my ride. So you do have people that as the service goes on, they kind of recalibrate, I guess, maybe what they've, what they know the wait time is probably going to be. And riders can check wait times without even requesting a ride. They can put in their info and, and they'll see the wait time. Um, so they can check before they request, but, um, we have seen that as well in, in service areas where, um, people start just expecting longer wait times during certain hours of the day, and then they request their rides earlier. And therefore, you know, it, it's fine for them. And, and, and then the wait times actually do creep up a bit more because people are just okay with now the longer wait time. So it's an interesting cycle there that sometimes can happen, but I'd say ideally we're, we're trying to, to average around that twenty minutes. I think that's really a, a, a good place for most people to be.
Great. Great. I have one more. Um, so we have twenty three hundred unique riders taking fifty five thousand rides. Um, is that also kind of a normal ratio? I don't know. I didn't do the average, how much the rides or, or. Uh, I'd like to see more unique riders, I guess is where I'm going. But I also just wanted to know, do we have super riders or is this kind of average?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have super riders, that's for sure. Um, and that can be seen as a good thing too, right? If, if someone is using this to connect with Rafta every day to and from, that's not a bad thing, right? That, that's great.
No, it's great.
But, um, you also have to remember that these people a lot of the time are also requesting rides for more than just themselves. There might be other people in their group. So, um, I know it's like, were there only twenty three hundred unique people onboard? And, and the answer is no, there were a lot more than that. So, you know, also keep that in mind. These are just people that actually requested the ride.
Okay.
Quick question to follow up on that one. Is, is the, the marginal increase in unique riders or accounts, I guess? What, what does that curve, what does that curve look like? Are we still, are we still increasing or are we kind of, are we plateauing with those number at, at this point? Um, is word kind of still spreading? Do we feel like we're, we're adding a handful of people a month? How many folks? I don't, I'm not sure if that was in here or not, but is there a spot where we, we can see what, how many, how many we've added monthly over the last year?
And is that? Just like new riders per month. Is that curve going up or is it flat?
Right.
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay. I mean, that'd be fun. Interesting just to see, because I think we'd see where, where we're heading in there.
Uh, and just on the demographics, um, last time you all presented, we talked about, I thought there was going to be a shift, but it sounds like that's still in the future to where when people sign up for the app or when they get an update, you'd ask some basic demographic questions so that we could start to see, you know, how much of this is sort of our, um, older population? How much of this is kids going to their friend's house or school? Um, those types of things. So can you just tell us where you are on that? Is that still on the roadmap or is that a, if we really request or sort of demand it as part of the contract or where, where are we with that? Cause I, I think that some of that information would be really helpful.
Yeah, for sure. We, we can certainly do that. Um, I, I don't know if, if we were like given, um, direction to, to go ahead and do that. Um, but something that, um, we are going to be doing in the, um, and I don't want to bring up a whole nother topic, but, uh, the Ride Waring Fork app. You know, we're, we are going to be moving some of the other services in the valley onto that app. Glenwood obviously is already on that. Um, and so that is a really good time to put those demographic questions into the app. If we want to get that same information for all riders, because we already have, right? We already have, say, twenty three hundred, uh, app accounts already created. Um, and so it would be an ideal time if we are going to move on to the Ride Waring Fork app. Um, those demographic questions were, were of interest to Aspen and some other places as well that they're going to be jumping on to Ride Waring Fork. So, um, that would be an ideal, the ideal time to do that because it will require an app update to, to kind of make the signup process require those bits of information. Um, so we can do it even without, you know, going, going the Ride Waring Fork app way. Uh, we can do it either way, but, um, yeah, we just kind of need direction like, hey, we, you know, these are the things we want to know. Yep, we'll, we'll get it done. Um, but we just need to know for sure what, what, what the items are. Um, and we can get it done. So.
Okay.
And then trustees, we, we are moving to that app with Town of Basalt as well. I think Stephen, you said at the Rafta meeting that we were looking at a November launch for that Ride Waring Fork app.
And we're going to keep supporting the Downtowner app for as long as, you know, we need to. Um, I think internally we're thinking at least through next summer, um, because there may be, you know, riders that are seasonal, um, you know, so give everyone time to, you know, get back, be able to see the messaging, um, and actually, you know, get a ride if they need to. Um, so, yeah.
So, so we will be moving to that. You know, we, we agree that a common app across all communities is a huge benefit for the riders. Um, and then we'll come back to you guys with some other kind of tangential discussions around kind of commonality among up and down the valley at a future conversation. Um, but we, we are moving to that. So I think we will get some of those demographic questions in the not so distant future.
Great.
Um, kind of nearing the end of our time for this item. We can keep going if we need to, but Chris, I talked on, on topic yesterday.
Oh, I, I guess now this feels like it's sort of back ways, but, um, I guess I was just curious if we had on, on the data side of things about. I guess, you know, people can look at the time and I guess, do we ever, do we ever have a sense of how many people are browsing, I guess, without actually, because I definitely feel like that's probably is a common thing. If people look at the time and then they go, oh, I'm not going to wait for that. And then they don't book a ride, but I don't know if we know if they looked but didn't book or that.
Do you track that at all Travis?
Yeah, we can, we can see, um, we, I'll, I'll look into that and see what we can pull for you, um, as far as like lookups basically kind of.
Okay, great. Colin.
So I just wanted to thank Travis for getting all this information together. This is really useful. We clearly need to have a conversation with Rafta, um, but we've never had quality information and now we do. Um, I think what we've shown by moving with Downtowner is that there is a significant demand for transit service in Carbondale. Uh, we have added roughly eight thousand trips a month and the circulator has only dropped like ten percent. So people are using it. I think we might be capped on how many rides we get from now on, just because of where we are with two vans. But I think, I mean, when I look at the, uh, Garfield Avenue, uh, apartments and how much use is there, I go Rafta's on the wrong route. And we need to have discussions with them about what could we do about that and could be working collectively cooperatively between Downtowner, the town and Rafta to get the most service possible, given the resources that we have. And fixed routes might not be the way to do this, but they might be, and it might be slightly different than what we currently have. And, uh, but this is just great information and, uh, kudos to your program and thanks for all the people riding. I mean, uh, twenty two ninety unique riders is like thirty percent of the population of Carbondale, which is a lot of people. So plus all the people who aren't registered, who are using it with their families and friends. So, you know, I think we're getting a lot out of this program. Uh, but I think, uh, what we've shown is there's more to do and more people could use it if we provide the service and we just have to figure out how we coordinate with Rafta to make that happen.
I like that point. And I think, I hope by this time next year, when we're coming around, then we really do have a good amount of data and I would like to have the, the circulator conversation. And then maybe, you know, even plant the seed about the traveler, you know, I know the Garfield County is sort of beleaguered by that service. And, you know, I know we've also had a lot of requests for expanding the Downtowner to Aspen Glen or whatever. Catherine Store Road and stuff. So I, I think those will be interesting questions that we, if we have the good data on, we can, you know, we can think about more carefully.
Okay. Other questions? And let's, let's do talk about whether we want to go with, um, any increase at about eighty thousand dollars additional, or at least ask staff to explore that in a budget, or if we want to go with staff recommendation of kind of hold the current system and engage, we'll engage with Rafta either way. I'd say early in the new year, um, we need to do that, but.
Um, I was just going to say, before we jump into that discussion, also just big picture, I think it'd be really good if we set some goals for what we would love to see our ridership. Um, I know it, one of the things when we, um, we're having the discussion at the Parks and Rec Commission about those four parking spaces in Chaco's Park that we removed. One of the things that I reminded the group was, we also are paying for Downtowner and we cycle. So maybe people don't need to drive downtown. But we also probably need to have a discussion with you guys on, if we're having an event downtown, you know, we will need a third bus or, you know, the third van running and stuff. So I think we don't have to do it tonight, but I just think it'd be good for us to think through, how do we increase ridership? Whether that's getting people to the park and ride, because that's an important aspect of getting to work for everybody and we, um, you know, want to justify it to Rafta, but also how do we get people downtown or, you know, get to our events without it becoming a people worrying so much about parking. And then that way, all of our parking discussions, we kind of know we have this as a solution. So whether that's we add the third bus now, or we just, you know, start discussions with Rafta at the beginning of the year and then decide later in the year that we're going to add, you know, increase service. I don't know if I want to wait a full year to increase service. I think it'd be worth us considering doing it next year, maybe by mid-year at least or something. Um, so th- those are just some of my thoughts, but, um, oh, and then on commercial partners, I do think, um, I mean, it'd be really cool to talk to Tourism Council and like, is this really being promoted at our hotels that are on the outskirts of town? You know, and maybe we would need some data from you guys on how many rides are coming from there to get folks downtown. Um, and then we, you know, ask Tourism Council to pitch in a little bit of money out of our tourism tax or lodging tax. So I think that could be a, a logical partner. Um, and, uh, and it, that's what our downtown restaurants are also asking for is getting more people downtown. So are we promoting it enough? Do we need to get, um, more kind of ads going? And again, this would be kind of in that prime time of getting people down for dinner and we may need that third bus, because it does seem like we're at max waiting times for those, those primo hours. So just a few of my thoughts on big picture items.
Yeah. And just to stick with that big picture thought, I appreciate you bringing up kind of what are our goals? Cause it, I don't feel like our goal is just to increase ridership. It's to increase certain types of ridership, right? I don't think there's anything inherently better about riding the Downtowner than driving your own car in some circumstances. So I think we should be pretty clear. And I don't know if tonight's the night for that, but as we move forward and as we propose changes, our initial goals were about getting people to the Bus Rapid Transit system from areas not well served by the park and ride. That's always been a struggle until we had this service and we cycle and to serve users who we cycle doesn't serve well. So people with mobility challenges, older people, that sort of thing. Um, those were the things we identified early on as our main goals and launching this and spending, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Town of Carbondale is, is quite a bit of money. Um, our, our end of this agreement with Rafta. Um, and I think the other, other goals that you mentioned, Erica, around parking, that's another big part of it too, right? Is that in like for Rafta, they either have to expand that park and ride or invest in other ways to get people to the regional service. But, um, I think as we look at, how do we fill, fit all these needs or meet all these needs in, in the most efficient way? I think that we have to be really clear about those goals. So that's something I think we'll, we'll come back to. Other thoughts and just kind of where are people with, um, as staff prepares the next draft of the budget over the next couple of weeks, um, do we want to be looking at potentially increasing it and seeing if that's viable in our budget? Um, or sticking with the current service and other thoughts? Yeah, Chris?
Um, I think two questions obviously are, are about, I think that's a good point of like, are we targeting it the right people? And so what are the ways to like, and what do we feel about, um, school children using? Do we want to try to make it an eighteen and over thing? Is that, you know, is that, so that's maybe one route or do we charge a buck or two if you're under sixty five and able bodied? Um, and then what are the, you know, both costs and revenue implications of maybe doing something like that, which maybe would give us the, the breathing room to add that third bus or whatever, you know, if we felt like. You know, so.
Yeah.
Those are some ideas.
Yeah. And I think those are great. I think that those will be part of a bigger picture discussion. Like for now, I think it's kind of a budget discussion without any major changes to the service plan. Um, and then we spend twenty twenty six getting going on that conversation with Rafta at the start of the year and getting ready way before the twenty twenty seven budget season. Like the, by June, we would have had all the discussions, done all the analysis, identified our goals, engaged the community and said, okay, we're, you know, the circulator's not going to run anymore. We're going to have all this service this way. Maybe some of these are on fixed routes. I mean, what I love about your company Downtowner is that you have told us every time that we've met that whatever we set as goals, you can help us accomplish them. And so if that's certain types of rides or certain demographics or certain areas or, you know, if we want to do a fixed route, I've always imagined one running up and down one thirty three north, south, north, south all the time that that covers. Most people are really close to that, you know, most of your destinations are pretty close to that. Um, and Rafta was never able to do that in a way that met their fifteen minute, um, headways for the Bus Rapid Transit. Um, so that's why they never expanded the circulator that way. So I think there's a lot of interesting discussion and analysis that can happen. But for now, uh, what are people's feelings about, um, kind of the expanded service or the businesses as usual? Approach for this budget cycle?
I guess my question is to staff, is the reason your, is your main concern with keeping the status or not increasing to another van, is that because of budget mostly, like just the cost?
I think it's more broad. I think really it's the conversation about the circulator and where that goes and how that plays in and not having the full picture before introducing that piece. I think that's probably the, the main, uh, concern about adding something before we really know what that whole picture could be. But it is also cost, uh, but that's probably not the number one driver.
But it is also cost, uh but that's probably not the number one driver.
Yeah, I mean, I I'd love to see what things look like. Um if we waited for having conversations with Rafta around the circulator, we wouldn't have the service because it's a very slow process. So I'm really sensitive to the uh the cost. We're putting in a lot of money right now. Totally get it. We fought very hard to try and change Rafta's approach to this. Um but there's a lot of service still. I mean, just this little, you know, increase it for a little bit, we service jumped. So I think there's a lot of people who would be using it to great effect if we increase the service. So I'd love to just hear what you, what where are we with our budget? You know, we're still plugging numbers in and could we possibly do it for half a year?
That was sort of my thought was, I don't think, obviously, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, but I would be interested in seeing if we could make it happen in the budget for twenty twenty-six. And maybe only commit to six months of the increased service, which gives us time, like, I don't see harm other than the cost in increasing the service for six months because it's more data. Then I'll have more things to go to Rafta with. If I can say to Rafta, like, we we added a a van for six months and and we increased ridership to the park and ride to fifty percent by increasing that van. I just think it's more data, and so if we can find room in the budget to do it, I think it's. I'd just like to see what it looks like.
Okay, Christina, any thoughts?
Um I still would, I I did think that we were gonna get more demographics. I just feel a lot of the peak because I have a son who uses it and sometimes I'm like, why are you using it from school to downtown? And, you know, you you could walk, you know, in the summer and so forth. So I was, I really, I think for me, I would like to see more demographics, like age, who's using it? I I think that would that would help me. I am price sensitive to the Downtowner. Um I just feel like we invest a lot in not knowing, like, you know, wh- what, um, you know, it's gonna be harder and harder to get people's to pay for it if we're giving it for free. So, and I don't think that's the goal, like we don't, I I don't know. I I'm still a little unclear on our goal for the Downtowner and I don't know if we could sustain free rides.
I'd also be open to making it like Glenwood, uh starting in twenty twenty-six, like making it a dollar.
Yeah.
And adding a van.
Yeah.
Because that that at making it a dollar and telling people like, we're also increasing service, we're, you you have more options, like you're gonna have less wait time. I don't know. I know we don't want to throw too much at the wall, but I I don't think a dollar's gonna stop a fifteen-year-old kid. I don't think a dollar's gonna stop me. I don't think it, you know, I think a dollar is like the most reasonable thing and that's what Glenwood's doing and they're seeing success.
And the recommendation in the packet was like, let's wait and see, right, on the Glenwood program? And I don't know if that was from your team or.
That that was for me. It's just they're charging a dollar is so new and their service is so new. Similarly, we figured if we had a little bit of information, is it people are riding because it's a new service? Or is it a dollar does or doesn't really matter? So I think that was really our recommendation on waiting to see, but if you guys want to do that, it's something that I think Downtowners told us is a kind of pseudo turn the switch type thing. Um it's something that could be implemented relatively quickly.
And I don't know if this is what you were just adding up on your calculator, Erica, but if we've got about five thousand rides a month times twelve months of the year, right, that's sixty thousand dollars if you charged a dollar ride and kept it that. Like, in this budget, I just also want to point out, it doesn't like make it break even or anything, far from it.
No, I know that. I but I think it might, it might deter the
Yeah.
folks that could be able-bodied and walk.
Mm-hmm.
Um maybe the parents are like, no, I'm not giving you the dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
It's just a credit card or is it's not a cash transaction?
How does that work in Glenwood? Can you guys just give us an overview?
We do mostly credit card transactions, but we do accept cash.
Yeah.
Other other um stakeholders do things like a token system, where you can come by City Hall, you pay ten bucks, you get ten poker chips to give to your driver for a ride. Um so there's there's a few different ways to go about it.
I mean, to move us along, like, I kind of like where I think Jess was suggesting that maybe there's a middle ground here where maybe we put in the budget additional money to expand the service during those peak hours for some months of the year. I was looking if there's like a peak season, but it looks like it's pretty steady throughout the year in Carbondale. Um which also tells me it's probably mostly locals riding it. And maybe we wait a few months into the year and maybe we do some of this work with Rafta, we get these conversations started and we try it out, even if it's for three months. Because what I like about the ability to add this service is it's not a, it won't feel like a new service, right? It's the same service. It'll just be lower wait time. So nobody will even know really that we added anything. It's kind of stealthy that way versus like, we add a whole new service to a whole new area of town and then we have to pull it back. Um they wouldn't know if the wait times decreased because fewer people are riding or.
Yeah, lower wait times or uh similar wait times and more ridership.
Right.
Right? So I think both of those are really great results. And I I would venture to guess that it would graduate towards similar wait times, more ridership, which is perfectly fine. Um you know, like Travis was kind of getting at, the ridership who's riding it every day from the park and ride, they're used to a Friday at five P M. It's gonna be busy. Um so they, you know, act accordingly and, you know, book accordingly. Um so yeah, that's that's what I would guess.
So maybe what we could do, I don't think we have to have a firm decision tonight, but to guide the budget, maybe staff in Downtowner can talk about, you know, what is that number that gives us? I don't know if it's six months or nine months, but maybe it's a little less than the number that's here. Um and and come back with some sort of proposal. It sounds like there's generally support for decreasing those wait times. It sounds like there's also some, you know, concerns and questions around exactly what are our goals and are we achieving them through adding that? Um but the the idea of gathering more data showing as we negotiate with Rafta and, you know, remember Rafta's our partner, right? Like, we're we're not really on opposite sides of this. Um so we want to work with Rafta uh to get as many people out of their cars and onto the bus as possible. That's still the like fundamental goal of all this. Um and so, yeah, if we can bring more data to the table and say, you know, this is something we really want to partner on, it's probably a good thing. Is that enough if we go there for tonight for staff and for the Downtowner? Okay. You guys, whatever. Well, is that.
Love to add the vehicle for you guys. You know, we have the vehicle already. It's already insured. We're just talking about driver hours. Um we have staff. Um, you know, I I agree that I think going into a long, longer term, you know, agreement and longer term discussions with Rafta, having some data is great.
Yeah.
Uh even if it's for a part of the year. Um and, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do, you know, like Travis was talking about allocating our resource, maybe, you know, for park and ride stuff, right? When you have two vehicles on the road, it's kind of hard to do. Um you're going to be putting some people out that aren't going to the park and ride, but maybe, you know, three, you know, one being allocated towards park and ride at maybe even certain hours of the day, starts to look a little better and is also fair to other riders of the service. So I think that, you know, that's another kind of way to look at this extra asset is it's kind of more things that we can kind of do on our end to prioritize and to do some experimenting as we plan long-term.
Okay.
Um and then, you know, I I've I've heard some, you know, commentary about demographics and who's riding. Um, you know, Mike has some great, you know, anecdotal stuff, but we'll save you from that tonight. Um we want to dig in. I'll, we'll dig in this more data um to try to, you know, paint more of a picture on, you know, if the, you know, if high school kids are, you know, using it a lot or, you know, kind of who who is it? Um I think that, you know, we we need to do a better job for you guys to paint the picture of, you know, who is riding. Um I think that, you know, we saw that in some data today. Um but, you know, want to try to, you know, kind of key in on some other things that are of interest to the to the trustees, so.
Well, it sounds like, I I just want to make sure that you all have enough information, you go and say, the board talked about everything and we don't know what they told us to do, so.
No, I think we have good information. I think we can come back with some options and, you know, we'll have eight different versions of the budget prepared for the next.
Don't do that.
Sixteen, I think sixteen.
I think I think also just um if if you could, the the demo demographic information that that you are interested in, um if that could be, you know, just jotted down, just bullet points. Um because we will kind of want to decide on on what those um questions that we're asking people during signup are uh in order to have that rolled out um essentially in in a month from now, because it's, you know, it's already almost end of October and we were likely going to be doing the transition in in about a month from now before winter really gets going. So o- over to the Ride Wearing Fork app. So knowing what demographic information you're interested in, and then we can kind of see, you know, okay, well, you know, Basalt, you know, Aspen, Glenwood, is everyone, you know, interested in the same stuff? Are there some differences? And um we will kind of want to just see what everyone's interested in um as we get that, get that set up.
And so do you need that from us right now or like in these discussions?
No, 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 it does not have to be today. I'm I'm just saying, you know, in the next couple of weeks, it would be great um just to get your list and then kind of kind of compare that against some other uh some other folks' lists.
Okay.
Yeah, if you get that to Ryan or myself, we can.
And I think our our, not to launch us into that, but the main thing that we keep wondering about is age. And I think probably something about disability or mobility status, you know, to get at people's ability. And I I think we don't want to ask you to ask so many questions that people don't want to do it. Um and so whatever, all the other departments, I'm sure there's some fairly standard things that we'd be looking for.
Uh we we can talk to the other jurisdictions and kind of see what they're thinking, share something out to you and then give us feedback.
Perfect.
I have a question about moving the app because I know like within the Latino Advisory Board too, a lot of it was, it took them a long time to get the app and download it. And I feel like we've given a lot of push on that Downtowner app and I feel like we've probably spent some money and time on that. So if we're gonna roll out a new app, um I don't know, I I just, are we gonna? Is it gonna, we, are we gonna put some marketing out there like saying there's a new app and who's gonna pay for that?
Can the team give us a little update or staff, whoever's leading that charge?
So um it regionally, Rafta has kind of been pushing a a singular app, a singular brand um for kind of all the communities using Downtowner. Um and that's where the impetus came. I know, Christina, we met with you kind of early on in that saying, you know, if we rebrand Carbondale's Downtowner service, what type of name do we want to use? Um a- and so I think there's still a little bit of decisions that we, Carbondale, need to make as far as um, you know, moving over to the app. I think the intent was really the existing app would kind of prompt you about this new app that has more regional um capabilities than just you have to download an individual app for Carbondale, for Aspen, for Glenwood, for Basalt. Um and that was going to be the primary focus. I don't think we were looking at doing anything in addition. However, um, you know, one thing that we did previously was those business cards with the Q R code, download the app. That could be something that we look at doing. I think that was English Spanish, both sides. And we could, you know, work with these guys to create a new batch of those about the new app. And then, you know, potentially as riders, use the service, hand them a card and say, hey, here's a, here's a new app. And that might be a relatively low-cost way of of educating people.
Yeah, and and just to add to that, what's great is, you know, everyone who has an account right now, um it's really easy for us to to do a big email blast out to to all of our current riders ahead of time. Let them know about the change. We can explain it a little bit more there. Um and then just have a, you know, a download button right there in the email. So I think there's probably a a bunch of pretty low-cost options where we can reach our current ridership. Um so so those folks, I'm 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 pretty confident that we can move them over pretty seamlessly.
Okay, Erica?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I don't feel like it's just Rafta pushing it. I mean, from the beginning, we were not tied to a name specifically because it made sense that eventually we all be on one app. Because it is annoying that I had to go then and be like, oh, wait, I don't have the Basalt Connect app. How am I gonna do it when I get to Basalt? And so um I think this is an awesome step forward. Um and I think Ride Wearing Fork uh rolls off the tongue really easy.
Yeah.
And I envision it like WeCycle eventually. Like, imagine if with WeCycle you had to get a different one and it was called something different in every community, it wouldn't work as seamlessly. So but you're right, we do have to manage that transition well, so we don't drop people who have gotten used to it. Okay, great discussion. Um thank you for the presentation. Thanks, staff, for your efforts on this and we look forward to next steps.
Thanks.
Thank. Let's take a quick break. We have two more um budget items after this and uh give everybody a little breather.
Like, I I was like, after, after it was like, and I gave a little misdirection, like, it sounded like I was just gonna be annoying and then. Yeah, of all, all the talents I could be blessed with, that's that, that's what I can do. Ben, I I talked with the the fire chief for about an hour this morning. It was, it was great. It was great. And so. It was one, it was wonderful. He's a great guy. Yeah, basically, yeah, ba- basically, basically this.
What were you talking about?
Yeah. I gotta chew over what I'm gonna do, but I may do something just.
And I think the main question I would ask yourself is, yeah, what's the chance that I'm.
As I talk to more people, most of them like, yeah, I think more and more people have looked at that as. Who knows? I, yeah, I'm not gonna create any, any. But I think I can write something that would potentially move the needle.
I just want to say.
I would certainly.
Yeah.
Their biggest fan, you know, like at a, at a lower percentage. And their biggest collaborator with that. Stay lower the residential. Repeated. So even as, even as property values have increased, the the. Yeah.
I'm looking forward to seeing those uh.
But you can't, I'm not confident out of this, I mean, they changed the rules of what we're doing as a single issue. Single issues.
And our
All right, Jared, are we ready?
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. So last two items are probably pretty quick and straightforward, um, budget presentations from departments. So first one of those is planning. So take it away, Jared.
Any questions?
It is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no, we, we have a super simple budget. It's, we, we don't really have any big ticket items like what we were just discussing. You know, I did want to try to highlight a couple of the maybe unique items in our budget that we're seeing in 2026, the, um, historic, the Old Town Residential Design Guidelines Grant. The, um, parking study phase one, which, um, P and Z is working on developing a scope for. Um, and then some land use code, uh, uh, consultant uh, work to, to kind of complete both of those efforts or to supplement both of those efforts. You know, other than that, I, I did include in, in the second paragraph, some of the, you know, ancillary budgets that the planning department works on with related to housing, um, Thompson House maintenance. Um, and so kind of give you a, a screenshot of some work completed this year, not 2024, but in 2025, apologize. I don't know what year we're in apparently. Um, and then kind of what we're, you know, anticipating coming into, to next year. So I'm really happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Um, but hopefully it's relatively straightforward.
Great. Questions, yeah?
Yeah, just a, just a question about the, uh, one unfilled position. How will we know if it's a full-time or a contract position? Is that going to be part of the budget discussion?
I'm looking right back at Jared. I think, um, there, um, I think that's a great question.
I mean, do we save that much from a contractor versus a?
No, I, I think it's more of a, you know, what type of work do we foresee kind of here in the next six months to two years? You know, if you're adding staff, um, we want to make sure that there's long-term work available for them. And with, you know, some of the early signs of maybe the housing market slowing down a little bit. Maybe some of our current planning work might slow down a little bit, which would free current staff up for other, um, long-term or, um, o- other type of work. And maybe we don't necessarily need a full-time position, but maybe we need to divert some of those funds to project-specific work. And so I think that was something that, that Ryan and I kind of discussed early on. I think some of the reason it wasn't filled in, in 2025 was due to a, a wide variety of issues with just kind of filling staff with identifying where staff's going to be housed, being very much a, a in-person organization as opposed to a remote work organization. And then kind of efforts on, on filling some maybe higher priority positions in other departments. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, from a space perspective, I think that was a, a diplomatic way of saying the, um, building department and the plans examiner kind of took the last open spot, which was the kitchen at the end of the hallway, which we're converting right now. And so as far as space in the building, until we, uh, identify how we could potentially remodel. We don't really have, uh, a, a space for someone right now. So a couple of things might lead us to, yeah, the contract might make more sense.
Just another suggestion too, is that, um, we're really trying, we've been really hampered by um, our project across the street and, and finding some people who could help us on the housing side. So we could actually build some. So if they're, as you guys are talking about that, if, if there's a way to start thinking about that expertise that we might be able to get in-house. I also wonder, and I totally understand all the logistics of where we put them and how do we pay for it? But I've always, Jared does a really great job, really thorough memos on all kinds of development uh, questions that we have, but I'd love to find a way to free up some of his time. So he can be a little higher in terms of his purview, that we're looking long range in ways. So many of the things that we struggle with now are are, are related to the fact that we didn't have the resources to actually have a planner who could work on that. Or we get all these folks who help us on a cop plan, but we're really not happy with what we got. And then we have all this turnover. So I'd really love to find a way to provide you with the resource, whether that's a person or a consultant, that you can take that thirty thousand, uh, foot view about where are we? What are we trying to do? What are the big decisions? And we've talked a lot about code updates. And we really don't seem to have the capacity to move that along very quickly. So I'd love to. That's my pitch for getting you more resources, uh, because I think it's a really important thing that we do.
And you're talking about the like development code rather than the building code.
Yeah, yeah, development code, not building code. Just to make sure. Going back there.
Yeah. A little bit, not a side note, but it, it, um, maybe not the, the biggest chunk of ours, but certainly on, uh, the housing. You know, we've talked about, uh, we've got built into the budget and HR position and the intent would be to take leases, maintenance, a lot of the things that Jared has to deal with on, uh, our own workforce housing and pulling that uh, into a more appropriate spot, which would free up some time. Questions, thoughts on the planning budget?
Just two questions. One, um, the parking study, that, that is all-inclusive. Or no? What, tell us, can you tell me a little more about what, so what the parking study is?
When, when the parking study was going to be scoped, you know, I think we talked about a wide variety of options. One being, uh, quick and dirty, just revise all of our parking ratios for what private development needs. Don't really have any data behind it. Don't have any information that necessarily says this is right for Carbondale, but just this is a industry standard. So let's use that. Um, the other was to kind of take a, a two-pronged approach. One is to kind of better understand what Carbondale's parking kind of goals are, how the community feels about parking. You know, as just a example, does the co- community fully embrace on-street parking everywhere as the primary source of parking for, for residential or commercial or whatever that might be? And then go through with the second phase of actually understanding what our parking capacity is. What our capacity, or what our parking usage is, and have that tell us what our parking ratios should be. So, um, the initial scope i- is honestly a spaghetti on the wall number. But our hope was that it would help us with that kind of, you know, I, I say the term loosely, like parking values. What's the community's feeling about parking? How do we want to be parked as a community? And then that will lead us to that phase two, which will be maybe more of the technical analysis that will lead us to the, the recommendations to, to update the the specific.
Yeah, I, I didn't have a concern with the, the, the cost. I just, I'm just hoping to get the scope because I, as I drove by the Futsal Court today, the, the number of spots that seemed to, to, to be there relative to the number of building, or the number, the number of units seem, is, is seem, seems like there's a lot of parking there suddenly, um, including the stuff underneath. I don't, I actually like the way that the, the buildings look. But anyway, I was just, I was just curious. I think the more, yeah, I'm super in favor of that. And then I, I was I, I guess maybe I was ill-informed. The Thompson House falls under your domain sort of?
I- in the sense that the Historic Preservation Commission's taking a very active role in helping scope out the building maintenance work that's going on. And so they've been the ones that have been kind of pushing information to help derive that budget number. Um, the current work is really looking at, um, refurbishing the enclosed patio off the backside of the Thompson House and, and repainting, fixing windows, doing wood trim work, stuff like that.
Okay. And Parks and Rec then takes, takes the grass
Correct.
Got you.
One more question about parking. Jared, um, remind me, we, we talked quite a bit about the parking required for town center. And we were talking about, uh, we might have to revisit that at some point. And we, how's that fit into this?
I, I think
If not.
I, I think it's directly within this. I think part of the first step is getting that feedback to say, how do we maybe treat downtown, um, apartments on transit, maybe differently than apartments out in, you know, South Carbondale that's disconnected from some of the walkability features. You know, do we, do we keep those in different buckets for parking ratios? So I think that was part of it versus all affordable, not all affordable. Those are part of the value questions that I think the planning commission are hoping to get answers on.
And, um, are we still expecting Jared to get some feedback from that, um, consultant who, the Affordable Housing Grant that's kind of looking at our codes for kind of barriers to affordable housing? Cause I thought that's where we were going to get some insight on that, was whether we might want to have different parking ratios for affordable housing than for free market.
Yeah, we, we are working on that. That's been stalled with, with getting that up and running. I, um, need to reach out to DOLA and see if we can get an extension on that grant for a year in hopes of doing that.
Okay. Cause I would still hope that that might get us some direction just for affordable housing projects that we might be able to implement if we get it any momentum on town center without waiting for phase one and phase two and all the process around this. Seems a little bit more straightforward. Just from the perspective of it adds so much cost to an affordable housing development to hit those ratios. Uh, other, any other thoughts from the side of the room on the planning budget? Okay. Yeah, Chris.
The only other thing, um, that I, I don't need to demand be in the budget, but I think we should keep this idea in the air is still about the P U D, D P U D-ing question. And I would hope that that could be, um, hopefully maybe more of a contract thing at some point. Or it, maybe it's more of a legal thing, but I would assume it is going to involve some burden on planning department as well.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, Basalt is working with Design Workshop on that very question. So we might be able to work, maybe just, uh, check in with Michelle.
Steal their homework, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're going to work through some of the legal issues and all that kind of stuff. So we probably could.
That's great news. Yeah. I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to make progress on that some way.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Jared.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
And our final topic for the evening is the Park and Rec Department Budget Goals and Work Plan. And I think this is Robin's first time coming to one of our meetings. Yes?
Yes, does everybody know Robin DeKever?
Maybe not, but make sure your mics are green so everybody can hear you. And yeah, let's start with introductions. That's great.
Um, Robin DeKever, yes, uh, um, yeah, I think this is, yeah, I wanted to bring her in on this meeting, especially to kind of see the process of, uh, just sharing our budget with you all. And, uh, and she's our, you know, programs manager and rec center manager is her, her official position. So.
Great.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Um, I, I wrote a book for you here, so sorry about that, but.
We're not going to let you read the whole book. We appreciate you writing it.
But when, when we get into the budget and we start to look at all the pieces of the budget that our, our department kind of has fingers in. Um, this is what comes out of that. So this, these are all the, um, things that we do, uh, do with our department and, and how it affects the budget. So, um, a lot of the, um, you know, the present admin efforts are really to finish up the pool project. Um, take a look at where Chaco's Parks needs to go. Um, look at wrapping up finally the Crystal River Restoration Project. And, um, and, and then look at some maintenance, really some deferred maintenance pieces in the budget. And, and really put some money towards some of those, um, taking care of what we already have and what we, what we own. And so, so that's kind of an overview of, of the way the budget looks. We, I'm happy to report that we, um, on those maintenance pieces, we, we found the right people to do some of those projects. I'm thinking of the bike park. So the jump doctors are, are experts of what they do out there. We're going to expand kind of some of their services there. And then we found, uh, somebody who, um, is very highly trained in, uh, skate park maintenance. And that's a very highly specialized skill. Um, we spent about, uh, seven thousand dollars with him to test his skill out, uh, there at the park this year, out of, out of this year's budget and saw what he was able to do, um, with that. And, you know, that's one of our parks that has been receiving dings from SIRSa because, uh, we just haven't found the right people to do the maintenance that's needed out there. And so, um, so we're going to contract with him for next year too, and, and get some more work done out there that's been deferred for too many years. So. Um, get that place safe and, and operational. So.
Great.
We did look at the, um, master plan, the ten-year master plan. We're really at the end of our ten-year master plan, our last two thousand and fifteen master plan. So two thousand and twenty-five is the end of that master plan. We, we wanted to kind of get in to a new master plan two thousand and twenty-six, but with the push of the pool kind of, uh, you know, still being under construction really into two thousand and twenty-six. We feel like we don't have the bandwidth to really, um, tackle that, um, next year. So that's been kind of deferred out to two thousand and twenty-seven. And then, uh, we're also, you know, uh, really looking at restructuring our special event process with Open Gov. So we, we got a big, big shift there into how we kind of operate and how we've been operating. So we'll use the special event task force to really, uh, roll out that new process for, for the special event producers to train them through that process, um, and how to use it and to, to take that old paperwork and make sure they throw it away and start with our new process. So that's kind of what on the admin side, what's happening. We are working on the Thompson House. I'm glad, glad we brought that up. We really saw that we needed to do some work this year to get that irrigation away from the foundation of that house and just, uh, for longevity's sake there. So that, that's actually happening now. Um, we have some money in the budget next year to kind of complete an, uh, ADA, uh, path, um, to, to the house itself. To, that's something that has not existed out there that has, um, is needed and will be needed once all those other improvements happen out there. So. So that's a, that's kind of the admin side. You know, Parks Department, we're, um, really working on Red Hill Trails Maintenance. Um, we have that Aston Valley Land Trust Endowment. We're going to be utilizing that in RFOV. Um, and to really fund that adopted trail program, um, that was a grant-funded program for them. That was a three-year grant that sun-setted. And so we've seen great value with that adopted trail program out there. And so we want to continue that. We talked to AVLT about using that endowment for that purpose. Um, and it, and they says, yes, that's exactly what it's there for. Um, and so we're, we're going to utilize that to keep that program going with RFOV on Red Hill Trails. So, so that's some expenditures, um, there. See what else I can share with you. Um, weed management plan, I do, do want to share a little bit with you on that. So we are, uh, our technique there, um, has been to really, uh, put some money into our temp worker budgets. Um, that's, that's really worked really well over the last couple of years. This year, this last year, we really just utilize those temp workers to really manually extract, uh, you know, weeds from many of our, our, our parklands. And because that happens at, at different times during the year, because, um, our, our parks department and is, is on, on the mo crew are really, you know, working all of our other acreage and then have like Fridays to do some projects like that. But, um, you need that weed mitigation on a Monday sometimes or on a Wednesday. And before these things go to seed and, and make your job harder. So we've really been utilizing, um, the temp workers and, and we've, um, increased some budget there because we've, we've kind of saw what their potential was last because we've, we've kinda saw what their potential was last summer. We said, okay, let's, let's use them. Oh no, we're going over budget. Yeah, but look at this need. So we just used them and so to let us know kinda what, what their value is and what they cost. And so that's why the budget kinda went up there. We did finally get goats into some of our property. And they, the goats on the go out of Boulder did look at our, our needs and gave us a quote of like fourteen hundred dollars per acre. That would be, you know, kind of a per visit, so they would, they are contracted with RAFTA. And so we would be kinda piggybacking on that, on those visits that they'll be in the valley. So, so we think it's an economical way to, to use the goats. They were out at the Bill Hanks Baseball outfield and North Face Parking Lot, Berms. And they were out there for about eight days and, and did, did its great job just to see how they operate, see what they do. You know, the aerate fertilized, they eat down the weeds. And then we, we come in behind them and oversee the property. So, so it'll be really interesting next spring to see how that, that effort worked. And they did that pro bono just to show us what they could, they could actually do. So it was really, really neat. So we, we wanna contract with them next year. Yeah, I think that we finally found the right people and, and we can put about ten thousand in the budget to look at about, about 3.5 acres, which would be a spring hit and then a fall hit of, of those, about 3.5 acres. And so we're gonna identify the best locations where that, where that would work. Cemetery improvements, so we are working with SEMSite software and, you know, by, by digitizing all that, that data that we had on paper, we finally did get that stored, securely stored and backups. But that exposed some discrepancies in what's on the ground and what's on paperwork. So we, we're gonna need to kind of look at some GPS potential work at some of our cemeteries at both Evergreen and Hillcrest and, and then try to line up reality to, to what's on paper. So there's still some effort that, that needs to happen there. Gateway RV Park, we are, you know, we had some sewer troubles out there this year that we're troubleshooting and repairing. And we put some money in the budget to, depending on where that goes out there. We don't think we need a full rebuild or anything. It's really sections of that seem to be failing some of our issues this summer where rocks about this size somehow in the pipe. So we had to dig them up and, and fix them.
Septic field over there.
And then there's a leach field, yeah. And Leach Field was just assessed. We waited till the end of the season and then had it assessed and it, it seems to be functioning okay. So it's more of our, our piping and, and the depth of our, so we might need to do some, some deeper piping. We think there's some icing and cracking issues out there with the existing sewer piping. Miners Park volleyball court improvements, we are asking for some money to replace our sand there. There's, we, we, we started to program that, that court with youth volleyball programs and tournaments. And it's, it's not up to speed for, for that type of use. There's an actual volleyball sand that we purchase instead of just aggregate from a, you know, and that, that is not fun to play on. And it's very dusty, so they actually make a volleyball sand that, that satisfies those two issues, non-dust and, and very comfortable, so. Then we're down to G N E D Park bathrooms. So, you know, that, that is an appropriate cost of putting in a new bathroom these days. So we just got back from the CPRA conference and I talked to a lot of those manufacturers and, and that is a correct budget number to replace a bathroom.
Question on the replacement of the bathrooms, is it gonna be like the same or you said something about manufactured?
Yeah, these are, that's a prefab that they build in a factory and truck it in. And you have to do some work, you know, and some underground work, some infrastructure work that lines up to their plans. And then they come in and hook it all up for you. They have their electricians and the plumbers. And it's, it's, so that, that would get you the bathroom installed and functional.
Yeah, how, how long will you close, do you have to close a park or how?
Um, you know, they, yeah, I mean, as far as, I mean, it comes ready to roll. So it just, it's your infrastructure work beforehand, you know, so you have the demo and then, yeah, start from scratch and, and then, you know, which would take, take a little bit, but not, not, not too long, you know, I mean, when they're, they're prefab like that and if you set it up right, they can hook it up in a day. They literally said they could, if it's set up, they can get it functional in a day and drop it in and hook everything up. I'll, I'll let Robin kinda cover Rec Center and Recreation Programming side of the budget and what, and what we kinda have coming down the pike there.
Sure, um, thanks, Eric. So as it has been kind of a topic, I, it feels like this evening, you could imagine the Rec Center is getting a little bit of age on it. So our focus for the next year really is gonna be maintaining it, making sure that it's operating correctly, making sure that it's as efficient as possible and putting some, making sure that we have the dollars to do that. So including, you know, building maintenance and replacement of some equipment is an annual sort of expenditure. Thinking about programming, I don't think we have anything major new in the works for programming. We want to expand and make sure that we continue our senior programming. And then I do, would like to see some improvement in our preschool programming. Some of that will come through with obviously the Aquatic Center, so hitting those little guys. And then one of the big things that I've started to experience this year, which was a big part of my job and I wasn't totally in the know before starting, were all the special events that Parks and Rec has a hand in. And so making sure that we continue that for our community is part of, you know, the budgeting process.
Like to come back to just, you know, the, really two you know, the Aquatic Center, so just where, where we are with that. You know, we are, have raised two million and six thousand dollars, nine hundred eighty-nine and seventy-six cents today, to date. So, yeah, so we're happy about that. We're, we're doing a final push here and through the end of the year to see if we can make up that, our goal of the two thousand, I mean, two million five hundred thousand. So, so we actually have a Capital Campaign Committee meeting tomorrow to kinda really go over that final, final marketing push. We do still have some grant asks out, T-Mobile, El Pumar. And we're speaking to Alpenglow Foundation too about our energy efficient side of, of this project. And they're interested in, in that too, so. So that, that's still, still trying to raise, raise some money to, you know, really backfill what we dipped into reserves to build what the public told us they wanted to build there. And then the next thing is Crystal River, oh, sorry, Chaco's Park Schematic Design Mesh Plan. So, you know, in this, this year's budget, we're trying to take our money that we allocated this year to get that whole park to, you know, construction document level, so a shovel-ready project. So, you know, I put a million dollars in, in next year's budget because I wanna obviously keep the, this project moving forward. You know, right now, it's, you know, it's a town park and it's in, it's in horrible shape for what we want our town parks to look like, right? So, so it's, it's, so we're putting some energy and effort into it right now. You know, we're aerating it, we're, we're hyperseeding it. We moved some irrigation when we saw that, you know, the existing irrigation that we inherited wasn't covering the park, right? And where we want that, that grass to grow just in the interim here before we go into, you know, our master plan work. And just to keep it functional, you know, we, we know that the park, you know, is lacking shade, right? And so, so the design itself is really, thinking about that, you know, we're gonna build shade there. You know, we're, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna always have to wait for trees to grow to have, have that type of shade. But we're actually gonna build shade there. It'll really help that, that function as a, as it did before. A nice shady downtown town park where you could hang out and have, have a, you know, a nice lunch, you know, from the farmer's market. You know, now, now it's a, it's a sauna, you know? So, so we're, you know, so, so that is, was a big ask of the budget, you know? And, and I think, you know, that's one thing that, that we need to look at is, is that an appropriate ask at, at this juncture with our, our unknowns in, in our rec sales and use tax budget and our operational unknowns of that budget. And, and, you know, I think, you know, yeah, I'd listen to your, your budget conversation when the initial budget came out. And, and that was one that, you know, was one of those big ticket items that, that needs some more scrutiny. So, so we're definitely, you know, wanna, wanna, wanna do that and listen to you guys and, and hear from you. I don't wanna stop the, the progress and, and, and where we want that to go. It's, it is, it is gonna be the heart of, of Carbondale when we, when we get this thing done, right? And so we don't wanna lose that, that vision and that, that dream that we all have of that, that piece of, piece of property. And it's multi-use nature. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a really cool place when we, when we, when we get it to, to what we, I think we have designed now. You know, we have a vetted design here that'll be super functional and super fun. And it's gonna be able to satisfy all those different needs that we already know exist there, so.
Okay. So it's, I mean, is that, and Ryan looking at you too, like, what, what do we need to get feedback on at this stage with this budget? We can have some questions as well, but let's try to hone in on what are the major issues.
Yeah, I think Eric's queued it up and, and like he said, he had listened to some of the conversation at the larger budget meeting. I think what, what we'll bring back to you in a week is something that tries to strike that balance of continuing to provide some level of funding so we can have some implementation of that vision at Chaco's. But not at that million dollar level, so we can also take care of, as we talked about, current needs, get the G N E D Park bathroom rebuilt and then also fill in where we're below the reserve policy in the rec fund. So I think, I think we kind of had some of that direction that we need going into next week. Where we're gonna try and balance accomplishing all of those things, maybe just not quite at the level that we thought.
Okay, that sounds right to me without, you know, I, I don't wanna tell you exactly what those numbers are. But I, I agree that I don't wanna put the Chaco's Park plan on a shelf yet because there, it's at risk then of losing the momentum that it has. And like I think with the Gateway Riverfront Park, that kinda happened. I think you've done a great job, Eric, of whenever we've done an improvement there, you've looked at the master plan and done that. But, and the, the nature park too, right? There were these early planning efforts. They had really big numbers associated with them. It felt too big. And so you might not even know that we have those two plans on the shelf, but it always feels like it's too expensive to do it. So I just really don't want that to happen, especially if we're spending all this on construction documents. We never went that far with those other schematic ideas. But I think the board was very clear that we also don't wanna put a million dollars of, of work into that project with all these other needs. So I wanna make sure that that's consistent then with the board to see an updated budget next time that keeps that project moving forward, but is a, a smaller number than what was originally proposed. Does that sound right to folks?
And I'd like to share, you know, if we, if we look at a phasing of that project, which is totally possible. You know, the first thing's gonna be undergrounding of electric lines, which, you know, we will have an RFP out from Excel here. Some budget with that one percent that's already in that fund to help that happen. That'd be the first kind of, you know, you know, really infrastructure that happens out there. But as far as phasing it, you know, I mean, what I, what we've looked at with the project team is, you know, what that number looks like. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna let you know, like five hundred thousand is a number where it would move one phase of that forward. You know, and so I just wanted to share that, whether that be, you know, the street work, you know, the hunger, street work that needs to happen there, or whether that be, you know, really looking at the, the platform and, and the, the stage, you know, itself and just get that, that piece done. So there's, there's ways to phase it, but, but it, you know, two hundred thousand probably not gonna get us there to, to get a phase done, so.
Oh, I was just gonna say, even if we don't include the full amount, and I can trust Eric that you'll do this, you're always looking for other funding. And so I just wanna say, if other funding came about or suddenly there is a grant that's we are able to receive, then I'd be fully supportive of us going after that so that we could move it kind of quicker along the process. So I just wanted to make sure that that's really clear, that even if we just put in like a phase one, you know, short phase budget, that if other funding's available, and even if, you know, maybe local, you know, downtown landowners are gonna say, hey, we want this done. Let's put in some money. I'd be totally open to, to that. The other thing is a little bit off, but since we're talking about Chaco's Park, I was noticing the, you know, we've talked about shade over the street too. Of like, we all have some dream of some big vision shade thing. The ice rink outside of town, they have some massive shade things up that I just noticed driving. That seem like they would be suitable, and I'm thinking of our ice rink downtown, at least this winter. And so I don't know, maybe they have an extra one that they could give us, but they were, they're kind of amazing. Like they're super lightweight and really high off the ground. So I realize the logistics of downtown, especially while we still have the power lines, might be crazy, but.
Yeah, and I, I can share with you kind of some of our thought processes for that downtown rink this, this year. We've, we've really struggled without the shade there to even build and hold ice, you know? And so, so we might take a respite on that and, and, but not. The reason that, why we built that is because our rink out at the rodeo ground, you know, is, is an amazing rink that doesn't really exist in other places where you can just drop in and play hockey, drop the puck and go, right? And that, that's pretty rare in the ice world, right? And so, and so what was happening, we were getting conflicting, people coming out there dropping the puck, playing hockey and kids trying to learn how to skate. So we're like, okay, we need a spot where we can separate those two uses and, and have, you know, a non-puck-flying rink, which was our downtown ring. So our thought process is to build, build that rink like we do down here, but over in the, in the actual practice arena out at the, out at the rodeo ground. So we'll have our regular rink out there. We already have everything for it, right? So it's just really, you know, just building that other one and, and we'd be maintaining both ices. But, but it's got that shade out there and it's got that cold little bottom land that happens out there. And we were able to retain ice much better out there, so. That's kind of the thought process for this year versus trying to battle that sunny, sunny spot downtown, so.
Other thoughts on kinda where we're headed here, doing the G N E D Park bathrooms and then looking at some number for phase one of Chaco's Park to keep some momentum behind that?
I just, I just wanted to sort of chime in a little bit. And one, completely sort of amazed and, and heartened by the enthusiasm of the rec department. And we have a lot of things to be super, super, super proud of. We also have a lot of, and I think I'll just call them just new shiny things at the moment. And while I really appreciate, you know, the idea of momentum and keeping our momentum, we also have a lot of unknowns. And there's a lot of things that still have to shake out with the pool, how it's gonna run, how we're gonna maximize our investment there. And, and contribute funds there to make sure that the most people get the most use you know, for the longest amount of time possible out of it. I think, you know, this is something certainly I said, and I, I thought there was some, some more agreement on really prioritizing that. And I, to the extent that, you know, half a million bucks still sounds like a lot of money, frankly. And, you know, things can be put on a shelf and still, still be present and be, be, be there and knowing. I mean, I don't think any of us are forgetting about Chaco's Park anytime soon. But I, I have real problems, I think, with, with committing to half a million bucks going forward with that when we, when we have a lot of unknowns, still, still, still to be, to be figured out with the pool. And, and a little bit of bandwidth and I, I appreciate the, the ability of us to, to kind of have the bandwidth that we do. But this, this note, I feel like with Chaco's Park in particular, certainly with the pool as well, there's, there's been this sort of momentum argument frequently and I just, and I, and I'm starting to, to really resist it. And, and the notion that because we've done this, we have to do this, because we do this, we have to do this. And I'm, I'm starting to get uncomfortable with some of that. And, and to the extent that Chaco's Park is, is something that And, and to the extent that Chacos Park is, is something that every, you know, quote un, you know, that everybody wants. And we've all, we've all been very excited about it, I think for sure. It's also one of the things that I've, I've heard the most pushback from, from people, um, in town. They're like, I don't know what's going on there. You know, we have Sopers Park, you know, what, what are we, why are we spending this there? I, I have heard that in, in, in a number of conversations and I haven't, I haven't brought that up. Um, so I have, I have, I've wrote, I do have, have some concerns. Um, I pulled up the, the master plan and, and I'm still, still somewhat confused, I guess, as to the phasing alternatives. There's, I mean, we have three or four phasing alternatives here. I don't know to what extent those are still valid or not. Um, to whatever extent, I guess, alternate three, which sort of prioritizes the road, fourth street. Um, I feel like that would at least, you know, to whatever extent we're, we're phasing things or going forward. One, I think shade doesn't necessarily have to be only the building. I mean, if we're, if we're holding out on shade and, and sort of holding shade hostage by, we have to build the big thing to get the shade. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that as the only solution. Um, but to the extent that we prioritize, you know, phases, phasing approach alternate three, which is the road first, I think that does play well into some of our, um, uh, what's our, what's our goofy, uh, tactical urbanism type things, which is, um, you know, creating narrower streets. And, and I think, um, honors our decision that we made, that I think we feel very good about in terms of creating more plaza and less parking. Um, so that's, I, I'm just putting that out there and curious where, where other folks fall along, along those lines. Um, you know, that's not, that's no, no, uh, no knock against the Parks and Rec Department. It's, it's just a, a matter of where I am on this particular project. Um, and it's not top of the list.
So Ross, are you suggesting we include zero for Chacos Park in 2026?
Um, I could see the demolition, or I'm sorry, the, the underground utilities being done, if that's the, if that's a step that, that makes sense for, for a lot of things happening there. To some extent, I, I would almost do that. I would rather see bathrooms at Third Street Center, um, or, or dealing, I'm sorry. Launchpad, launchpad, launchpad. Um, but, but deal, but, but some plans that include, um, you know, how we're going to deal with that particular element, um, or focusing some effort there and grass, you know? I mean, I, I, I would not want to, I don't want us to be having, uh, First Fridays and, and, um, farmers markets on, you know, the same sort of sod that we kind of did to this summer, which was.
It sounds like the grass is going to get done and it sounds like the undergrounding is out of our one percent from Excel funds. So that's kind of a separate issue. And if you're talking about restrooms, like that's a new architecture and planning exercise that we haven't conducted.
Yeah.
Um, other feelings, I mean, I, I want to support the staff kind of thrust here of bring us back a phase one and, 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 you know, show us what that could be. Um, and let's keep it moving forward. But other thoughts, we don't all have to agree on this.
Open to, uh, some scenarios. I mean, what's it look like? We know we can't do a million. Probably, you know, closer to Ross. Uh, also, we haven't really had a conversation about housing. And, uh, I'd love to make sure that we have some resources so we can do some things. Uh, again, we are trying to do an awful lot. Uh, rec program is a great example of doing a lot. So, um, and we've got a good, we got a nice plan, but you know, I'd love to see some fills in to see how we can move it along, but also achieve, in my mind, is one of our biggest, uh, projects is town center.
Other thoughts? What do we want to see on Chacos in the next draft?
I'm open to seeing scenarios and what that looks like. I mean, I'm not going to just say zero dollars without knowing what the options are.
I'm not a zero, like full stop, but I, but, but I'm closer to less for sure.
Good. Christina?
Just more options. And I'm not, yeah, I, I, I think we should put dollars into it, but I don't know about, without knowing more options, I, I think we need more options.
I mean, I just want to be clear, like I want to give staff clear enough direction. We don't have to make a decision, but I don't want to tell them to bring us back a bunch of options when Eric's telling us a first phase is about half a million dollars. So do we want to see that and are we going to seriously consider that? Or if that's totally off the table for folks, then let's not go through the motions of that. I am very open to that and I would like to see that.
Are the construction documents finished or are they?
No, they're, yeah, still in process. So we will probably have a rollover of some of, some of that already previously allocated money into next year's budget to get those done. So.
So then we're talking about money to implement that.
That's kind of the prerequisite to phasing to some degree, I would imagine. Um, I, I, I think I'm okay where we are. I mean, here somewhere like, hopefully, yeah, have, uh, build enough flexibility that if there's an opportunity, that maybe we can go there. But I think our, for me, I think, yeah, just getting the things undergrounded would be a nice, enough accomplishment for next year. Um, if we, if, if worse comes to worse, that's, seems okay to me. Um, I feel like the, um, I didn't see the options. I don't know what, what, I don't know if I saw that part, but, um, I don't, I think I might be of the opposite mind that I think I might leave the road to the last. I, I'm still on like, whatever we can do to figure out defensible tree positions that we can plant, uh, you know? Like we build the planter for the tree that's, you know, a setup thing and then it's, you know, can get backed into by a bulldozer.
I mean, I think we might all have different visions on what phase one should be. Chris is always about the trees. Ross is talking about the street, others might talk about the, the stage. I, I'm open to staff coming back and saying, based on the design and utility and all that, we think that this makes sense, whatever it is, is a first phase that'll add value for three to five years before we do anything else, something like that. Um, it sounds like leaning toward those lower numbers is going to be the way to get it, to get to a yes.
I was going to say, I'm open to going up to the 500,000.
Good.
Um, and so I'm fine with that level of, um, investment for next year. Cause I think that's what it's going to take, whether it is a reinforced tree or a street or whatever makes sense to do first, uh, with the plan. I do think it'd be good to move forward.
I just, I saw the note about G N E D needing more scrutiny and trying to decide if that was a 2026 project. And I think that if we're saying, yes, let's look at phase one of Chacos and that impacts that bathroom at G N E D Park, I, I don't know that I would switch. I don't know that I would take one over the, I don't know that I would take Chacos over G N E D in 2026.
So it sounds like G N E D is a go.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, obviously with the, the board's direction that, you know, a million's not the number. I think we've solved for G N E D. Then there's a conversation about additionally, um, okay, are we going to backfill to hit that reserve policy? Your policy does say that you've got, when you dip below there, you've got three budget cycles to get back up. So we could present a couple of those numbers too, where I think it was 300,000. So, okay. Do we want to do that whole thing next year or is it a hundred, a hundred and a hundred gets us back there? Maybe that opens up a little bit more room, uh, on the Chacos Park side. So I, I think we have, we have some options that we can bring back and, and have a good discussion. And we, we might not solve which phase is first next week, but, um, we can, we could, uh, have some options.
And I would just say also, I think we all agree that like, we don't want to overextend. We want to make sure that the pool has the resources that it needs to, to run. We don't know what those operating costs are. We're not even done with it yet. We want to make sure we can do housing. We still have town center to get done. So this is just our constant problem, right? And every board's constant problem. We want more than, than we have the budget to do. Um, but I, I just personally just don't want to kind of risk mothballing Chacos. And I know it's easy to say that won't happen, but it happens. It really happens. Um, and so it's not going to get cheaper. And so I would love to just get it started in some way.
And I'll just, my experience with municipal projects is that if we just put it on a shelf and say, let's wait until 2027 to do anything, this, this board changes. The public opinion may change and then we've got more design cost. Because like if we get to construction documents and it sits on the shelf for a year, I promise you something will change and we will spend more money to then build what we've designed. So like Armory in Aspen is now a $54 million food court. So I just, and how many times have we talked about that building?
Yeah.
So I just want to be cautious about that other conversation that happens when we put things on the shelf for even a year. We could cost ourselves $500,000.
Yeah.
I feel like the Armory though also is subject to subjective decision-making by the board that have pushed that to its current situation.
Yeah. Change, the board could change enough that then we are spending $500,000 more or $200,000 more to redesign something over there.
Looked like you lost that. Okay. You're just ready with the buzzer. Okay. Um, Eric and Robin and Ryan, do you have the feedback that you need on this budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else anybody wanted to highlight or discuss?
I guess I will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I just think it, it is amazing and ambitious what you guys have done. Like the fact that your first three things were like, we're wrapping up the aquatic center, we're wrapping up the Crystal River Restoration Project, which is a phenomenal park. I went and walked down there the other day with my girls and it was, it's just such a massive undertaking. And you can just tell that river is so much healthier. It's really cool. Um, and then with Chacos Park, even just getting the design documents, like that's a major, major haul. So thank you so much for all of the work. Um, I know it's been a very stressful year, so thank you.
I, I got to build on that. I got feedback at coffee with the mayor the other day. Some ladies stopped by to talk about a street light that was out, but then we talked about other things and, uh, they said, well, if you ever need to save money, it seems like the parks are maintained like too well. You could do less. And I was like, I'll tell Eric. Hear that.
Take it down.
Anywhere. So that, so don't take that to heart because I think we're doing a great job.
Agreed.
Any other budget items?
I, I had a quick question about the footsail court. Is that coming online this year? Any, is there any chance of 2026 that comes online and is that something that needs to be at all in our budget?
Um, you know, that's, that's the responsibility of that, that development to, to finish and to, you know, and to, and bring that whole park, you know, it's going to be a public park.
Yeah. And a big sign that says public park.
Do they then dedicate it to the town and we maintain it and schedule it or does it stay?
No, it's, it's set up, um, the same way Triangle Park and Orchard Park is with the, uh, P U D with the River Valley Ranch. So it's set up in that same manner where they, they, uh, you know, it's an open public park and they maintain it in perpetuity. Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you both for, uh, a great budget and thanks, Ryan and Ola over there listening to us in the background. For keeping us moving.
Changing on the fly.
I can do a quick preview of next week, but I haven't really looked at it. Um, what's in the planner so far? So far, we just have one presentation on the planner. So I'm sure there will be more and I think we have some other budget updates. Um, but we'll see that in a couple of days.
Yes.
Okay.
When are we getting the grant information? When does that?
Yeah. What's our schedule on that community grant information where we get the big spreadsheet, Patrick?
Um, you'll, uh, you'll get that by Friday.
This Friday. Okay. And when do you need it back?
Um, I think I had on the timeline, the second week of November.
Okay. So we've got a lot of time with that.
To procrastinate.
Okay.
I'll have to do it the night before.
All right. Thanks, everybody.